Ladies and gentlemen, it's seven o'clock. We'll call the February 12th, 2020 Warren County Planning Commission meeting in order. Our first item on our agenda tonight is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adopt the agenda for February 12th, 2020.
A second, speaker. The motion is adopted. Please, a second. All those in favor say aye. And I oppose. A seven, our agenda is set. Next item is approval of the regular meeting minutes of January 8th, 2020.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of January 8th, 2020.
I'll sit here in a second, okay? All those in favor say aye. And I oppose. Okay, minutes approved. Next up is public presentations. There are limited issues not included on the agenda. This is attended as an opportunity for public, you have input on relative planning issues. Not attended is a question and answer period. If anyone has anything you'd like to bring before us, please walk up forward. Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to the agenda. We have two public hearings tonight. Our first one, item 2019-11-02, Asa and Andrea Foss, a request for conditional use permit for a short-term tourist rental. Property is located at 653 Whitney Lane in Timberland Manor State Subdivision, identified on Tax Map 36D, Section 1 is Lot 2. Property is owned agricultural, located in South River Magisterio District. Let's look.
The applicants are requesting a conditional use permit for a short-term tourist rental for seasonal part-time rental of their single-family dwelling. In the applicant's statement of justification, which you have in your packet, they state that they recently purchased the property this year and have used it as their, we can't get away, holiday home for their family and friends. They also stated that they would like to be able to make some rental income off the property in order to offset the taxes and cost to maintain the property as a second home. The property would be managed by a caretaker, Marissa, at Silver Lake. Again, the property address is 653 Whitney Lane, Tax Map 36D, Section 1, Parcel 2, in the Timberland Manor State subdivision. It is approximately 6.97 acres. In your packet, you have a staff report which goes through the supplementary regulations for short-term tourist rentals and our zoning ordinance. The applicant has been issued a sewage disposal system operation permit from the Health Department for a subject permitted for four bedrooms with a maximum occupancy of eight people. And, let's see, it is located on the corner, and the house located on the corner of Whitney Lane and Jones Farm Road, and he is required to have property boundaries clearly marked. There's a property management plan that has been submitted by the applicant that is in your packets. And the short-term tourist rental, it does meet the setback requirements in our zoning ordinance. We measured the closest dwelling at 334 feet to the east. Staff is recommending that if the Planning Commission were to recommend approval of this application, that the following conditions be applied. The applicant shall comply with all Warren County Health Department regulations and requirements, and the maximum number of occupants shall not exceed eight as determined according to the health permit for a four-bedroom dwelling. The applicant shall have a well water test annually for E. coli, coliform, bacteria, and a copy of the results shall be submitted to the planning and health department. We have received, we received a letter, two letters, from residents in the subdivision. And the one is from the president of the road committee, Road Maintenance Association. And I won't go through the whole email because you have it in front of you. But they were unable to send a letter to us either approving or opposing the proposed short-term rental use, and there is an explanation of why in that email that Mr. Bray sent. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. The public hearing has been properly advertised and all adjacent property owners were notified of this public hearing. It was delayed a couple of months just to allow the road association to hold a meeting.
Thank you very much. Before we open the public hearing, when you come forward, please into the microphone state your name and address for the records. And we have four who have signed up the sheet so far for tonight. First person is Ann Tompkins. Please come forward and address us.
Did you guys go first? Yeah. Oh, I... Ann Tompkins, 536 Timberland Manor Drive, Bentonville, Virginia. What else did you need?
State your, state your position for against the law.
Oh, okay. I wanted to know if I could defer to the Roy's, I mean to the Lee family. They had, um... You want to talk to them? May I do that?
They signed up. They...
Okay, okay, let me just go forward then. I am against it only because I have a concern for the neighborhood. We, we are a small cozy residence, residential area of about 27 homes. And when we moved up there, you know, we were, I think we did, by many neighbors, and it's like we rely on each other. And my concern is that if this is approved, that there would be other homes that would want to also apply for the permit to use their home as an Airbnb. And I think that would just change the flavor of the neighborhood. And that's my only, my only concern with it. But, yeah, it was a, no, that I don't support it. Okay?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next person is Deborah Haines.
My name's Deborah Haines. My address is 676 Timberland Manor Drive, Bentonville, Virginia. I am opposed. I did not vote in the voting that was held for the neighborhood for a couple of specific reasons, one of which included some intimidation, not by the petitioner or by any ones. So, just wanted to let you know that. We're concerned, my husband and I, we've been in the neighborhood about four and a half years. We chose the neighborhood because it is isolation, seclusion, privacy, knowledge of people and their lives and their comings and goings. And so, we're kind of, we don't have a neighborhood watch, but we kind of do watch out for each other. When strangers enter the neighborhood, a lot of times, they've been there for joyriding and looking for just a place to do some donuts in the gravel and have fun at that. My husband and I personally stopped people and said, you know, this is a private road and this is not, it's not a through road. We don't allow that here. We do not have signage to that effect, although we are considering that. Bringing people into the neighborhood that have been brought there via advertising to the public and revealing our location is concerning because we don't have security measures in place. It is not a gated community. There is no neighborhood watch per se. We're a mile and a half, two miles off of around 340. And so, to get to our neighborhood, you've got to know where you're going. People don't just happenstance there unless they're just out looking for trouble, I think. We have had a couple of instances in the neighborhood, and it just brings that security issue in the forefront of our minds. Some of the other concerns are just the miscommunication and perhaps misunderstanding of the purpose and the amount of usage that a bed and breakfast may take. I, we had a conversation with a lady from the Planning Commission, and I may be misunderstood, but I thought that the transit use could be up to 270 days. But from the petitioner, we understand it was going to be very minimal and occasional and just once in a while kind of thing, which probably wouldn't be as concerning. But if it could be up to 270 days, then unless that restriction is part of the permit, then we basically have a full-time neighbor because there are a lot of people in the neighborhood that are just weekend residents, and they're there less than 270 days. So, the transit almost becomes as popular or as much of a resident as some of the owners. So, the security issue, the quietness of the neighborhood, people coming out, they bring four-wheelers. We recently spent a lot of money getting millings on that road because it's been gravel all these years to help down with the dust and stuff. And so, four-wheelers, it's just not a good idea because there's still a lot of chuck holes in rough places, and it gets dangerous. So, I think that, that's my concern, and the amount of usage, the security of the neighborhood, and the use of the roads. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, next one is Roy and John Lee.
My name is Roy Lee, and I'm at 739 Whitney. And we're right next to this particular lot, Lot 2. We would be affected the most, and I'm against it simply because we bought this back in 13, 2013, and for the idea that it is a private area. In doing so, I had surveyors survey the lot, found out that Lot 2, a good bit of the driveway is on our property. And I notified the existing owners by, through a lawyer. And, but I didn't have a problem with the way things were then. But now, I've hired the survey company to come back, resurvey it, and they'll find out, they'll have to move the driveway to a certain extent before anything can be done. So, I'd have to put a fence up to protect the property. Because the whole house was moved over far enough to where you can't get up and over without going on our property if I put the fence up. I mean, it's more than likely they'll be on our, coming on our property whether there's somebody there to say yes or no. So, you know, it's been a quiet, good neighborhood to be in. We come on weekends most of the time, but eventually I hope to retire and spend more time there. I don't want to worry about people on the property that's not, that's not supposed to be there. And there's nobody going to be there to say no or show where the property line is. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Next person on the sheet tonight is Suzanne Savage.
Yes, I'm Suzanne Savage. I live at 33 Timberland Manor Drive, and so, I'm next to them. So, the Fosses are with their house in between, they're two houses away from me. And I am adamantly against having a, and you said bed and breakfast, no, this is an Airbnb. You have somebody on site in a bed and breakfast. We had a meeting on the 29th where residents were allowed to speak with Mr. Foss about what our concerns were, and I had been researching this, although I've never stayed at an Airbnb. I have many friends, family, loved ones that have, and I didn't want to hog that conversation. But I listed several things I was totally against. And we did talk about the fact that we have big acreage. I've got almost nine and a half acres. They have eleven and a half. If something goes wrong, I can't run to my neighbor's house. And people vacation, they'll go for two months. And then, of course, the law, the law...
Walk out on the lawn, please.
Please? I'm tired. I just did my taxes. The lease are gone all the time. You know, they're here, what, three weeks, maybe total a whole year? And that's why they went, we're putting up a fence. And then, of course, they had, the realtor was supposed to mention, because they've been through this with the county before, that that driveway that the sun's on beforehand is on their property. And they didn't make a big stink of it, but now that there's going to be an Airbnb or potentially, and something you did mention is, we did do the vote, and there was a letter here to Mr. Windling, that the vote that we did among the owners, it was 12 against and 7 for. And we have to have at least 17 to get a majority and change the covenants. And we couldn't get it, nobody cared. But right now, the people that did care stepped forward and went no way. But getting back to the land issue, Roy and Von Lee are putting up that fence because they don't want to worry about the security issues of somebody coming. And the vetting process, I don't know if you know about it, but I've been studying it, you know, even with the Airbnb National Association, the vetting process is slim none. And if you don't have an on-site manager, and I can mention two cases where, one in Virginia Beach, one in New Orleans, where the person that got the permit, the homeowners association voted it out unless they were willing to have somebody live there, I mean right there. And the individual that he suggested does not live right there. He has a full-time job in Ashburn, Virginia, plus at Nike he works as a landscaper, plus he has five kids. He's not going to come bouncing over there if there's an issue. In other words, he's not an on-site manager. He doesn't qualify. So, that's a big concern for me. As a woman living alone, I'm a very fast runner, but if something, and I have security, but my issue is I don't want to have strangers coming in and running into the place that I don't know. I walk around that neighborhood every day, almost. I walked today in the rain. I walk. And frequently, I pick up trash. Frequently, I'll see people speeding on the rural road, which Roy mentioned, because we just got millings put down because they scattered rocks and things like that. But we're suddenly, that's outsiders. And now, I've pretty much gotten to recognize people's cars, but I don't want people I don't know showing up and staying in the neighborhood. I also mentioned at this meeting, which I know you don't care about, but I'm going to tell you about because I do care, I have a parrot that can't fly that I walk. And he stays on my shoulder because if mommy's not afraid, he's not afraid. But if I said to him, you better not allow dogs, first of all, there's no insurance that will insure what a dog, what an animal does on your property. He said, okay, well, I won't allow animals. Well, the vetting process is such, unless he comes and inspects the place, or the property manager does, they can sneak a dog in. And if I'm walking my parrot to the mailbox, which is past their place, the round trip for me is a half-mile, some mongrel comes down the road.
How bad would you say it's not, Mark?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry. Once it stands, it comes running down the driveway, and something happens to my parrot, we go to war. I mean, because he'll jump. So, I said, that is my first concern. I don't want something, I don't want tenants that haven't been fully vetted, or there's an individual there that I can call and in two minutes will be there. And that's how the one in New Orleans, my ex, had the Airbnbs there. And my niece lives on the oceanfront in Virginia Beach. That's what the individual had to have. They had to have somebody. One lived across the street, one lived in one of the Airbnbs, and they're all four together. So, you had somebody that was a door-knock away to take care of the place. And so far, we don't have that, and I don't like it. So, but, you know, I think I've given you everything I can think of. I've been screaming for a long time. Okay. I will sit down. Thank you.
Has everyone signed up to address this issue tonight? Is there anyone else that's something differently?
Is there? Are you having a beer?
Yeah.
Yes.
I didn't know what, he hadn't signed, I don't know whether you gave him the thing.
Didn't know if you wanted to address it.
I'd be happy to.
Hi, Asa Foss, 653 Whitney Lane. I'd like to thank, first off, the Warren County Planning Department staff for the time and energy they've dedicated to this item. I know it's been handled especially, Taryn, it's a map. The reason that my wife and I are interested in hosting occasional guests, like Taryn mentioned, is to fund occasional repairs and improvements. Really, our plan is for any money that would be earned, we'd be invested right back in the property. Got a long list of things that we need to do sooner, and some big improvement that we like to do potentially down the road. We love being at the house. That's why most weekends we fill it with friends and extended family. All of our friends and neighbors are always super excited to come out and share the house with us when we're there. I really do try to strive to live by the golden rule in every interaction, every day. And there's no exceptions to that. As I think Taryn mentioned in her introduction, Timberland Manor State is not a gated community like Hynow. Our house is the first one in the neighborhood. It just shares a couple hundred feet of the frontage road. There's only the one house behind us, which I think Suzanne mentioned was occupied for really in a couple of weeks a year. And in thinking about like what the potential impact is, like realistically for neighbors, which is, you know, what the application states, like, in our opinion, it's really going to be noise. So, you know, we put in place some really specific rules to prohibit that. No ATVs, no vehicles, no shooting firearms, you know, loud music, you know, fireworks. We delayed this hearing multiple times, like Taryn mentioned, in order to give the homeowners association, the roommate association, time to talk about this because this, I think, is hands-on, like the first time that this subject has come up in the history of the association. So, we want to make sure that there's ample time for the community to speak and then eventually vote on, which we did. The only specific concerns that were brought up at the neighborhood meeting a few weeks ago, one was potentially guest littering on the road. And then, another specific concern was guests potentially popping apart our fence and bothering the cows that are occasionally in the field in front of our house. So, it seems like a lot of the concerns are more general and about precedence, more than like specific issues with this application. One other thing like about the property is, you know, not only to the first house, but, you know, beyond it, you know, it's a pretty sharp hill with a bend beyond it, and, you know, we've never actually driven or explored much past that just because it's such a physical barrier back there. And in terms of the alley and property line issue, like we definitely need to talk, this is the first I'm hearing about it. Had it been in our documents, like it legally should have been, I definitely would have negotiated over that. So, we certainly have some follow-up to do there because that certainly is an issue that we'll, we'll have to tackle. That is really it, basically, on behalf of my family, like thank you. And wonder if there are any questions from the committee?
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Public hearing is over.
We'll wait until New York.
Public hearing is over.
When the public hearing is over, we'll have a chance to address some of the...
I'm new.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Who else wants to address this?
Are we allowed to make a comment?
No, ma'am, you've...
Okay, in rebuttal, okay.
Okay. All right. Seeing no one come forward, public hearing is closed. Now, if you have a question. Now you ask your questions.
I was looking through some of your information here, and I know one of the concerns was management of the property. It names a Greg Nelson, I guess that's right.
It's Nielsen.
Nielsen. And he's supposed to be like a property manager, so to speak, for this.
Could you be the point of contact if there's any type of immediate concern from either the guests or from the owners? Because he lives close by.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, let's just say, because I know where the property's at, and I know some of their concerns, let's just say there was a problem with some of the renters. I mean, is he willing to take care of that before law enforcement came in there, you know? Because you just don't know about...
I spoke with him briefly, and he said he's totally willing to do that, yes. Yeah. And he's really one of the most responsible, kind, reasonable guys I've met in a really long time. I don't know if you've come across him, but he, he's really an exceptional character in a positive way.
Okay. That's my only question.
Yeah. And that's, that's why I trust him, that he's been maintaining the property for quite some time from the previous owners, and we're more than happy to, you know, continue working with them.
Mr.? How far does he actually live from the property? Mileage?
I would say just a couple miles, two or three.
Okay.
I don't have anything. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to make some comments?
Absolutely.
I get that, you know, it's a private neighborhood. In years past, we've had every one of these things, when we decided to do them all special maintenance, every one of them are so unique. We've seen some houses in farms area that were very poorly taken care of, trash left in the yard, and they were all long-term rentals. And the short-term rental program really improved those properties because they had a management plan, someone had to take the trash. And then, the, the house had to be maintained fairly, fairly well, or it was not a market of product. Nobody could run a house that was in horrible condition and trash everywhere. But it does sound like this house fits that window even, you know, it's not a ruffler in structure where the rental part adds to it. So, this is kind of tough, a tough, these are tougher decisions than that. Those are pretty simple because no matter what you do, it'll be an improvement. But I do support a big language guy. I almost feel like if it's your property, you should be allowed to do, within reason, pretty much whatever you want, you know, as far as, you know, you can make some money with it or offset your costs, you know, based on, on the cost of taxes and maintenance of a property that you don't, don't live there full-time. I feel pretty good about this one, you know, based on, you know, they've got, you know, I've seen some of them where they've hired third-party like professional management companies, and those guys are, you know, are not as successful. I do feel better if you've got somebody that's not on-site. But, you know, these things, you know, you can get a bad long-term renter too, in which you had, worst case, you'll get a bad renter for a weekend or maybe a week. You know, you won't get a long-term, you know? And I've been in other neighborhoods where I've had a bad long-term renter, and that's a, that's a whole lot harder to deal with. These things weren't great, and the rules aren't first, and everybody abides by them. And if it does get through, I wouldn't hesitate to use these contact numbers or the sheriff's department immediately if something didn't look exactly right, you know? The pluses to this one is it's not in the back of subdivision, it is in the front. And he does have very good setback from his other neighbors. You've seen some of them where they're bare minimum. And I didn't, I didn't have a chance to visit this site, but it looks like in the pictures it's mostly wood. The easement issue is an issue, but I think it's separate from this one. And I'm not an attorney, so I don't know whether it's civil or how, I have no idea how it works because it's been there. Property's changed hands once, and it sounds like this easement's been in the wrong place. But I wouldn't use that against him or for him. You know, I do think, I do think it's something that needs to be addressed. If it was my property and someone had accidentally put their easement over on it and I had surveyed to prove it, I would contact my attorneys, and I would want it, even if it's plain room, I'd feel that way too. If it's yours, keep it on your side. If it's mine, I'm going to keep it on my side. But that won't be, I don't think it's a planning permission matter. I think it's for someone down the hall or an attorney. But that's all I have to say on it. If anybody else has a question, a comment.
Only thing I could add, just maybe being too simplistic now, this, this is a conditional use permit. Only thing I could add, just maybe being too simplistic now, this, this is a conditional use permit. If Mr. Foss violates some of the requirements that we put on him, this permit can be taken from him. And we do go by and make sure everything goes up to snuff or, or as needed. Anybody else got anything? Public hearings closed. We'd be asking you. I have nothing on that. Anyone with a parent for motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I would move the planning commission forward this application to the board of supervisors with a recommendation to approve the conditional use permit request of Asia and Andre and Foss for a short-term personal with the conditions as recommended by staff.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed. Ayes had it. This will be forwarded on to the board supervisors for final determination. Thank you. Our next item tonight, public hearings. Item 2020-01-01, Sean O'Reilly. Request for conditional use permit for short-term personal. Property is located at 317 Old Barn Lane, identified on tax map $13, Lot 7. Property is owned agricultural, located in the Shinnonville Magisterial District. And crowd lead, Mr. Wenling, it's yours.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Members of the planning commission. Uh, yes, Mr. O'Reilly has stated in his statement of application that he and his family have been involved with short-term tourist rentals for approximately 10 years. Uh, this dwelling was built in 2019 with the intention of the applicant who were using it as a short-term tourist rental business. It feels that it supports local businesses and restaurants and showcases the community's natural resources. Uh, this property has not had any previous conditional use permits or zoning violations relating to it. Um, it was part of the subdivision, family subdivision done through the Hostman's farm in 2006. There is an HOA that we notified about the application and we received an email from the president of the HOA who stated that their bylaws specifically allow for short-term tourist rentals and that she had no objection to the conditional use permit that Mr. O'Reilly was requesting. Property dwelling meets the setback requirements to adjacent single-family dwellings. The property is 200, the dwelling is 282 feet to the closest dwelling. If the planning commission is going to move this forward to the board, staff recommends the following conditions of the permit along with the supplemental regulations. Number one, the applicant shall comply with Warren County Health Department requirements, regulations, and the maximum number of occupations shall not exceed eight as determined according to the Health Department operational permit for a four-bedroom dwelling. Number two, the applicant should have the well-water test annually and a copy of the result shall be submitted to planning and health departments by the end of the calendar year. This public hearing has been properly advertised. Adjacent property owners have been notified. Be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. O'Reilly is here also, if you may have any for him.
Thank you very much. Any comments for public hearing opens? Public hearing is now open. The only act, only person we have signed up to speak is the applicant, Mr. O'Reilly.
Good evening. My name is Sean O'Reilly. I'm currently residing at 4550 Superior Square in Fairfax, Virginia. First of all, thank you for taking the time to review this this evening. As Matt said, my family have been doing the short-term tourist rentals for over 10 years. I managed them for about five years and I'm, I'm not doing the day-to-day anymore. But, you know, it is, it's been a wonderful experience. I know there's a lot of fear of having new people coming to town. But we found everyone's coming for the same thing that, that we are for peace and quiet, for, to relax, to spend time with their families. And it's, it's been, it's been a wonderful experience. I also wanted to add, we're very, I'm very familiar with Airbnb and all the, this HomeAway, the different websites that people use to come for these things. And I think it's a important note because I know that not just in, in mind, but in general, they've become, there, there is a review process now. So the homeowners get reviewed by the guests, but the homeowner also reviews the guests. So if that's how people who are coming to party and make a huge mess and if you, if I get a renter and they come and they destroy my property, I'm going to get, I'm going to make note of that. It goes in, everybody can see that. So maybe the next person doesn't rent to that person. So there, there is a vetting process for this where the people that want to come ruin people's houses and make a mess, they're vetted out. And because Airbnb doesn't want to deal with that, they're ensuring, you know, the stay and helping homeowners as well to keep things clean and neat. So it's something to keep in mind when, when, you know, presenting with these things with this particular house. And, you know, I think Matt spoke to most of the other stuff on the property, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I ask all. No, hearings closed. Appears to me that everyone, everything pretty much seems to be in order.
These guys have done a lot of work on it too. They're pretty solid.
Yeah. All right. Is there a motion to be made?
Make a motion.
Yes, sir.
To accept the.
Yeah.
Got to read it all.
There's all. And the second sheet.
Yes. Move that the planning commission forward this application to the board of supervisors with their recommendation of approval for conditional use permit requested by Sean O'Reilly for the short-term tourist rental with the conditions as recommended by the board. Can I read it to him?
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favors? Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Ayes had it. It will be passed on to the board supervisors probably the next meeting. All right, that's it for our public hearings tonight. We have three authorizations to advertise. First one, 2020-02-01, Joseph W. Cola. Request for conditional use permit for a short-term tourist rental. Property is located in 37 Wellspring Road, as identified on tax map 44, Lot 28. Property is owned agricultural, located in the South River Magisterial District. Does it open?
The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for a short-term tourist rental for the single-family dwelling located at 37 Wellspring Road. In the applicant's statement of justification, he states that he and his family recently purchased the property as an investment property in one-day home to enjoy the beauty of the area. Um, this is, the property is approximately 0.7 acres. Um, it is located off of Ginnie Manor Loop in the Brown Town area. In your package, you have a staff report that goes through all of our short-term tourist regulations that are found in our zoning ordinance. Um, the applicant does have a septic, septic permit from the Health Department for a two-bedroom, maximal two-person septic system. There is a drain building that wanted adjacent property. The, the property owner will need to submit a management plan to our office for review. Um, we'll get that prior to the public hearing on this request. And the property is not located in an area with a homeowners association. And the tourist dwelling would meet the setback requirements that are listed in our zoning ordinance. Um, we did take a site visit to the site yesterday. Mr. Curtis came with us. Um, and it, it was an old church at one point, but it's been converted to a single-family dwelling. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I will read through the conditions yet until public hearing.
Church is an interesting use.
Sounds like this old building said so for use, is it?
Yep. I know one church, a lot more interesting use, but I'll just go into it here. It's, it's really actually kind of cool. I'll mention it's actually up in, that's up in West Virginia, I'm close to Martins Park there. It's a church that got converted into a funeral home.
That's a bit interesting.
Mm-hmm. I mean, they do, you know, the business stuff underneath and then for visitation and all for the deceased is bring them up there to the sanctuary. That's another story. Sorry to get us off track there.
Send by hand.
Anybody on this one? If not, we'll take a motion to see them next month.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission authorize the proposed conditional use permit request for advertising for public hearing.
I second.
All right, all those in favor? Aye. Aye opposed? Ayes had it? It'll be, let's see, next month. Next authorization to advertise, Joey T. Lee. Request for conditional use permit for private use camping. Property is located in Burma Road in Mandelay subdivision, identified on tax map 19H, section one, Lot 16. Property is owned residential R1, located in North River Magisterial District. Mr. Wenling?
Yes, sir. Members of the planning commission, Mr. Lee purchased this in May of 2016, or 2016, excuse me. He was unaware that a conditional use permit was required. He was notified once staff did find out he was camping on that property and would like to bring the property into compliance for recreational use. His intent is to use property seasonally for outdoor recreation and have access to the North Fork, Ocean Dove, or fishing kayak. This property has not had any additional, previous conditional use permits issued. It is in the subdivision where a number of these conditional use permits were issued for private use camping. Their vacant lots located in the special flood hazard area. The optimal use is as a recreational type use. Supplemental regulations, planning staff would schedule site visits or gain a review of the permit, verify the worthiness of RVs or campers. And to see if the RV is temporarily being removed. You know, they would report, be required to have a building or zoning permit for a shed if he chooses to install one. You do have some regulations regarding that in the floodplain overlay district. As I mentioned, is, there would be requirement for the RVs to be on-site 180 consecutive calendar days. And staff would review this typically between November and February. I'll, I'll read the conditions because we have shortened them from our standard conditions previously. But these would be for the public hearing. Number one, materials associated with campers are to be stored in an orderly fashion during the time of use and are to be removed from the site when not used. And number two, the applicant shall post the property at a lot or parcel number for fire and emergency rescue services and have an emergency degress plan for removal of the recreational vehicles and portable cargo prior to the predicted, or a predicted flood event. The applicant's not here, but I'd be happy to answer any questions from the panel. Thank you.
Looks like it's a, looks like in the picture it's one beside it too, is that one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is next to Mr. Barb's property. It's about midway. Mr. Barb has a number of properties at the end of Burma Road. And as you can see, I think this was taken in 2018 when we had some of those significant flood events. The property, those tend to get flooded periodically. So it's a good idea for them to have a plan in place.
Is there a restriction on the number of campers that you bring in there?
Yes, sir. There's two, you're allowed two campers up to that 180 consecutive calendar days. And that's per parcel or contiguous parcels owned by the property owner.
Okay.
And they have to be registered?
Correct, they're registered, yeah.
Which for some people that is an issue. Anyone else got anything? Take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the planning commission authorize the proposed conditional use permit request for advertising for public hearing.
I second.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, this will be forwarded on for the next meeting. Our last authoriz, and authorization to advertise. 2020-02-03, Tommy in Chastehaw. Request for conditional use permit on private use camping. Property is located on Burma Road in Mandelay subdivision, identified on tax map 19H, section one, as lots 14 and 15. Property is owned for residential R1, located in North River Magisterial District. Appears to be next door to the one we just had. Mr. Wenling, say that.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, that is correct. Both property owners were notified at the same time. We were actually picking up a public hearing sign for an adjacent VZA hearing. They're located in the special flood hazard area. The homes were notified, would like to bring the order, the property into compliance with the code. And for a recreational use, certain tenants also use the property seasonally for outdoor recreation, gatherings of families and friends, camping picnic and other recreational uses as stated in their statement of justification. Uh, this property has not had any previous conditional use permits. Again, the same supplemental regulations will apply and we will be recommending the same conditions as we have for Mr. Lee. Mr. Wong is not here and doesn't see him, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Do it again? Let's do it again.
Mr. Chairman, I move the planning commission authorize the proposed conditional use permit request for advertising for public hearing.
I second, second. All right, I'm just late the second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes had it. Motion's carried. And that's it for authorizations to advertise. We're now under commission matters, 2019 planning commission annual report. Does it open?
In your package, you have a copy of the 2019 annual report of the Warren County Planning Commission. Um, as you know, the code of Virginia does require each year for the planning commission to report its year's activities through the, through the board supervisors. Um, so we tried to put together this report. By the time we get all of our numbers from the previous years, usually at the February planning commission meeting. So in just, I'll go through and hit the highlights. We did just receive our population number. As of July 1, 2019, we were at 39,936 of population in Warren County. That does include the town front row as well. We had 150 new housing unit permits last year. And that does equal a 0.88% annual housing unit increase for 2019. We have a, a goal in our conference of plan to not exceed a 2% to 3% annual growth rate. Um, so that is well within that goal. And if you can see the graphs, I usually do over the past 10 years, so you can see how it's changed over those years. We approve various types of subdivisions. They are all listed in the plan, I mean, in the report. And I'll go through the back so we can hit the highlights. The planning commission and board supervisors completed and adopted a strategic vision for the county in 2019. That vision document was created following a citizen survey, interviews with local staff and agencies, and a visioning retreat. And that kind of kicked off the conference of plan review, which we'll, we'll pick back up this year. And the planning commission reviewed 20 conditional use permits last year. Nine of those were for short-term rentals and five were for private use camping, as you saw some more tonight. The commission also re- The commission also reviewed a request from the fire rescue department for a training facility. The commission recommended approval of a zoning ordinance amendment proposed by Backroom Brewery to allow events associated with microbreweries. They also offered a conditional use permit for that business to expand for such events. Another large project was the Equus Capital Partners rezoning of approximately 20 acres just north of the jail. That property was rezoned to industrial to allow 324,000 square foot warehousing facility and that site plan's currently under review in our department. We spent, the planning commission spent a lot of time last year reviewing the Kirk Around the West proposed rezonings and residential development requests for 1,025 housing units and that, those applications have been withdrawn by the applicant at the end of last year. We reviewed several site plans. We have a multi-tenant building coming in place of the former Capital One Bank building. That site plan has been approved and the temporary construction trailer has been issued and demolition permit. The internal demolition permit has been approved and the standard entire demolition permit will be approved. So that'll be coming down and the multi-tenant building will be going up. And we also completed the review of the Chapel at Christian, which is currently under construction. And the Taco Bell and Valley quickly opened as well. We continue to lead the Development Review Committee and the Joint County-Town and County Tourism Advisory Committee. The law on subject appeals for was considered three variances last year and the board's zoning appeals would consider six variances last year. And our GIS coordinator is busy working with the sheriff's department, town department while, and the Virginia Information Technology Agency for the next generation nine-in-one project, which is, makes a more digital system for not a one-call system. So she's busy working on that. We continue to work with the regional planning commission. We continue to make planning and GIS presentations to the Smithsonian Conservation Research Center each semester and other community groups. Three of our planning commissioners' terms ended in 2019 and this year we would like to welcome our three new planning commissioners. And we look forward to working with the board supervisors this coming year and maybe some planning issues. We'll need to begin the conference of plan update and recommend an updated capital improvement plan and review and renew our three county, I don't know, four district. So looking forward to, busy here. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If you're okay with the report, we can go ahead and get it forwarded to the board and I have it on the agenda for next week. If there's anything you want to change, let me know.
If anyone wants to throw a motion?
Do I have to do a motion?
I mean, it'd be good.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to present the Warren County Planning Commission and report 2019 to the board supervisors.
Is there a second? Second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed, ayes had it. This will be passed on to the board. Next item is commission members concerned. Jersey, do you have anything you'd like to mention this month?
I was just a little too new to ask questions.
No, no, that's. Mr. Lonro?
I'm here.
Okay. All I got to say is last month we welcomed Joe, Scott, Crystal. Welcome, glad to have you on board. Mr. Henry?
I have nothing new. I'd also like to welcome the rest of the new members and I'm glad to have a full commission one.
Yeah. That's enough.
And I'm glad to be here.
Okay.
I can ask questions, but I'm too new yet.
Assistant county attorney, any thing on the horizon?
No, I do not have anything for you tonight, but I will also join everyone and welcome the new board members and look forward to working with you this year.
Thank you so much. Anything else to discuss?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Wenning?
I have no comments or reports, but I would like to just let the planning commission know we look forward to serving you as staff. And if you have any questions, if we can help you in any way, please feel free to reach out to me.
Okay.
Welcome new commissioners. Joe Petty, our zoning administrator, just a few updates. We continue to give zoning permits in. Even with the rain, we're still getting a lot of permits in, which is good. And next month, hoping to bring some new text amendments here. We got to make some updates and I'm working with our county attorney's office to make sure we get all that correct and that it meets the Virginia state code and even federal codes. Look forward to that next month and look forward to working with you while you're here.
This is a short session for the General Assembly this year.
Yeah, so we're keeping an eye on some certain items that they have that may come into play that affect zoning. There's some, I think I saw some agri tourism kind of related issues in there that we'll just keep an eye on to see if we need to make any updates for their decisions.
Excellent. I wonder if there's anything else. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Second.
Done. Good job.